Listen up. I'm going to bring this Dunbarren Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Thursday, February 16th. All three selectmen are present. Town Administrator is present. Recording is Mr. Leo, Mr. Bob Martell for the citizens of Dunbarren. I had the wrong Martell there for a second. Okay, gentlemen, we have some minutes to approve from last week.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from February 9, 2023.
As amended, Dave?
I'd say as amended. It doesn't say that here, but I think they were. Oh, there it is. As amended.
I'll second.
Any discussion on them, gentlemen? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, we have one member of the public here. Bob, any comments for us?
I have one.
Sure.
It's Bob Martell, over there in rows. And evidently, some residents think that the people that are videotaping the selectmen's meeting get compensated. So this will be on tape anyways. Those that want to watch, this is a volunteer group that's been doing this. And when it uploads it, puts it in their own time. Usually, there's one individual that's always doing this, Lee Martell. But there's a few of us that'll jump in when it serves a purpose to videotape the meetings. And we do this gratis. We don't look for anything. We're just doing it to make the public aware of what the meetings are like. I mean, so just to clear the air, and this will be on tape, so that these people can probably share it with others out there.
Okay.
No one gets compensated for doing this.
And it's done on private equipment, too.
Yes.
Bob, could you also explain how it makes us look much bigger than we really are?
Uh, I'd like to do that, but thank goodness the camera's not on me.
Thank you, Bob. Thanks, Bob. Okay, town business. We're gonna, let's look at, first thing, meeting agenda is the capital improvements plan. And Lean told us earlier, I understand we have to approve the front page as sternly. Is that correct?
Correct. So the capital improvements that we are currently posting in our town report has technically expired. So it's important that we get this back on track with a new group of years to go forward. It's the tool that we use to try to maintain a flat or a level increase of tax rates. This part of the application, it only requires Page 1 of the three-page document that you have there.
Okay.
And the selectmen currently at the bottom of the Page 1 have two, currently two items on the list. I didn't know if the board was interested in adding to this or renewing the existing ones, because right now, all we have listed are land purchase, capital reserve fund, which we do have a capital reserve established with a small amount in there. And then we have the town facility capital reserve fund with an anticipated cost of $1 million, so.
Lean, this shows six years over here on the right.
Mm-hmm.
We're in 2023 now.
Right.
So 2022 isn't shown here. But when we look at our totals for like our buildings, do we want to do, I guess, even though they have a land purchase at 660?
Yep.
It doesn't need, it needs to be funded in the next five years. So I guess whatever we want to donate to, we can.
Right. And the thing is, we, the article on the warrant adds $5,000 this year. It brings up to $50,000. And that would, we were going to use that as a potential deposit on a piece of property if something came up. And then we'd have to go to the legislative body for approval.
Do a warrant, yep.
And so right now, again, what this does, David, at least, we've got to understand, so we don't have a big spike in the tax rate.
Right.
But then again, how many capital reserves do we have to have that each one adds up to an increased tax rate at the same time?
Yeah.
So.
So I'm taking just that land one now and not the facility one.
I would concur with that.
Yeah.
But my thought is between 5 and 10 a year over these next ones to try and keep building it up slowly. So that gives another $50,000, and then we're going to have up to 100 in it.
Without killing, without killing the tax rate.
Yeah.
Can I just make, can I make one recommendation? Leave the town facility capital reserve.
Yeah, we just will zero it off.
Run it with zero funding for the next five years.
Yep.
Okay, that's how you want to do it. Okay.
So one year, if we wanted to start putting money into it, we could. Business already in there, on there.
Yep.
Okay. And then how do you want to proceed for the land?
What was the question?
How do you want to fund the land?
Well, we're funding it at 5,000 to bring up to 50,000 this year. And I think every year, every year, we would add as we see.
Between 5 and 10,000 dollars to it.
Okay.
So some years, if we're not buying a fire truck or a big building, maybe we'll go to 10 or 20 on it. But on the years like this, where we're planning on maybe doing a lease or a purchase on a fire truck and a police car, you know, we'll keep it down lower.
What do we need to do? Add a dollar amount every box here? I think that's what she's trying to say. We have to, we have to put numbers in there.
Why don't we put 5,000 as a minimum?
Well.
Because we can adjust it as we go forward.
Well, I think if you went with 5,000 for 2023, because we're going to update it for 2023, and then do the 10,000, you don't have to fund it, 10,000, but it's just showing the bottom line tax impact if those are consistent with the dollars that you propose. That's going to give you 100 grand. That's still not a lot, but it could be announced.
I think we should just put 10,000 in there, because it doesn't mean we have to stick to it, but be a good target point, like you said.
We can put 10, but they are going to go and do this on a spreadsheet for the whole.
What do you want to do? Five?
Because the DRA is going to take this information. They're going to put it on a spreadsheet, look at our capital improvements over the years, and lay us out a plan. And they're trying to do this to make the selectmen have a better plan and awareness to it.
DRA? Because Central New Hampshire, maybe?
Yeah, Central New Hampshire, I'm sorry.
Okay, got it. All right.
Yeah, but I think we need to look at funding that account pretty aggressively for the future. I mean, 50,000 doesn't really get you much.
No.
No, why don't we, we'll put 5, and then we'll do 10, 10, 10. We can always do less than that. We just.
Yeah.
We can even do zero.
If it's a tight year, we don't do anything.
Like you said, I think we'll just adjust it on what our purchases are per the year.
All right. Well, consensus 10 is fine for the year.
Five for this year, because that's what we have on the line.
Five for this year, because that's what we have.
And then 10 for the next five years.
That's fine.
Okay. And then we'll leave the facilities on.
With, with no funding this way?
With no funding. Okay. All right. Everything else is being addressed by the different departments. That's what we may need to do, look at. And then according to her directions, we have to fill out an application, a new application or existing. So where this isn't existing, I'll fill out this tomorrow morning and then hand it over to.
Okay.
And I did stop in and see Donna and told her that we weren't ignoring her. She had sent an email to the selectmen a couple of weeks back, and then another one earlier this week in reference to reallocating rooms and this. And I told her at our last selectmen's meeting, we decided to do it with our own budget, whatever we decide to do.
In fact, I called her this afternoon regarding the same thing. And what I'm, what I like to do is, it's going to come out of our budget, operating budget. And we're not talking about a major overhaul, but things, a reconfiguration for smooth operations. Little things like putting glass doors on where we have, where you can people, see people coming in, some soundproofing, maybe a rearrangement of the offices. But the three, the three key people would be the selectmen's rep, Lean for her department. I would like to see Donna for, since she's a major area down here, and maybe the town clerk to work out, to work out a plan and get to us. I don't see a major thing, but before we can do anything to this building, I'd like to have the Jeff Trexler who volunteered to come in and look at what we can and can't do, like put up a wall, take down a wall, whatever. I'd like to have some structural evaluation before we touch anything to include putting doors in. Would you agree with that?
Well, one thing that, in talking with Donna earlier this week, is we talked about making your wall higher in your office, so you weren't confronting with all the people coming in all the time. And I know that that wall did used to be higher a lot of years back and got cut back, so they could see over it. So that part wouldn't need Jeff, I don't think.
No, but at the same time, the, what it will do is like, Lean would have a beautiful air-conditioned area, and the other two people up front would be sweltering in the heat. And so it's going to require some looking at H-tract, too.
Yeah, that won't be anything for Jeff, though.
No, no. But the thing is.
I just don't want to spin his wheels too much, because I gotta have him look at the lift on the stage more up there, too, so.
He did offer to do that for us. We had approached him back in October.
I would say, I could target after the school board meeting, after everything is settled for him. So things settle down for him, and then out of his leisure, maybe late this springtime, I'd take a look at it.
Yeah, because we do have other projects in the town that have to be addressed for us, and we understand that. And the small things that can get us by for even a quieter workspace might be just putting a door that's, you can see through, so that you can close it. You know that somebody's still in that room if somebody has to come in and look. But it also dents the sound, so you don't hear someone in the middle office.
I think those, that would, and it'd be good for security, too. Someone could be sitting at the front desk and see what's going in and out, but have the sound barrier there. So that's something on the table. I don't think, we're not going to say, I don't think we're going to say no to anything at this point. But we want to look at some structural considerations, and we'll go from there.
Yep.
Okay? Thank you. Okay. So Dave, we both hit Donna up this week.
Yeah. I just wanted to let her know, hey, we're not avoiding you, but in our last meeting, we did decide that we're going to try and do whatever we need in this building out of our own budget.
Correct.
Because capital improvements, I expect, you know, they're 15,000 or greater. And there's something that should be in the far foreseeable future, not something you want to work on right away, though.
All right, next item, Town Hall Second Floor Use Policy. I'm not going to ask, I'm going to throw a few ideas I had, just ideas. We're not going to really discuss it, because Lean gave us a whole packet of other towns, and those other towns have policies out there. I don't want to reinvent the wheel when you don't have to. But if you don't mind, I'd like to share a couple of ideas I'm going to throw out, just, just so you guys can be thinking where I'm thinking. I felt the elevator, the whole purpose of having the elevator, the lift, was for handicapped. I want to restrict it for use for the handicapped people only. I don't want people just going willy-nilly, using it for moving up a, moving up a coffee supply, or just going up and down because it's there. I think it should be restrictive to just handicapped people.
Well, I think it will be. The biggest thing is elderly people sometimes need it if they can't make it up.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. But the thing is, and I said, handicapped children will have to be accompanied by an adult.
I don't think you're going to see, I hope you're not going to see a bunch of people abusing it. I don't think.
Yes, but the thing is, Dave, you were a kid once. Don't you like that it'll go up and just push all the buttons and have.
I don't think it should be part of our policy. I think we should.
Well, the thing is, that's just something to think about. And I said, commercial, I said, commercial for-profit activities would be prohibited, for profit. And I said, political fundraisers would be prohibited. However, regular political meetings, I have no issue with. But political fundraisers, I would talk about. And I also said, at the beginning, they talk about drop policy was they wanted to use the website to make reservations. No, I think it should be done in person. And it also said, no groups on the second floor while the library's open. I'm sorry, you can have a group of 10, 12, 15 people up there while the library's open. So the thing is, I said, no large groups with loud activities will be authorized during library hours, but not none. I think there are some small meetings that could meet up there where they're going to be sitting around a table talking and have no impact on the library at all. And those are just a couple of things. And then I talked about attendance must not exceed 250. I want to get a readout from the, as you, I think one of you guys may have said what the fire department says. I like to start off small. Maybe start it off at 1 to 150 initially, and then see how the building reacts to everything. I don't want to say, we can have it for 250 people from day one. Let's just see how it works. Impact on sewage system, impact upon everything there. Lastly, all trash and compit should be removed. No, should, will be removed.
Carry on, carry on.
Right. And, and the thing is, a security deposit. I was going to say, $100 refundable security deposit and a non-refundable custodian fee of $75 for groups more than 50 and $30 for groups less than 50, something like that. But just playing with those numbers. Those are just some ideas I'm throwing out.
Should we, should we ask our current cleaner to give us a price for up there and then make that, adjust that accordingly?
Yes. The thing is, and that's why I did talk to Lean earlier today. I asked her what we're being charged currently. And when we get an estimate, we can use that as a guideline. But the thing is, I like the, the idea of what we do for the transfer station. Dave said before, we don't have many things we give to the residents and services in town. So I don't want to have a one-for-one. I want, this is a service to the, that we're offering to them.
You know, we have a, a little bit of a new area. It's an entryway to a building, just like this entryway. We don't ask people to donate to clean this floor. This is part of their town.
Right.
And they paid taxes to have that addition. And it came, whether it came through those revenues, it came, we either given them back them as their revenues and their taxes or that. So realistically, I don't want to overtax.
The cleaning.
The residents for the cleaning, because the cleaning should be something we do as a town anyway.
Right. But the thing is, I say, keep it minimal. Maybe have something in there.
I mean, you walk into school, they don't charge you to clean the floor, you know? It's part of having that building as a town building.
Right.
And so.
Okay, but.
And I want to make sure we really think about the charging, only because, you know, the 501Cs and all these other, there's no way for them to get that money unless they fundraise for it, because there's, you know, or somebody gives them a donation.
True.
So I just want to be careful with those, only because all of these things that we're allowing up there are really taxpayers from our town. It's no other town going up there, so.
Okay.
And if it doesn't work out, and we find that people are abusing it, hey, we're going to bring that up next year and say, okay, this is what we're doing to fix it.
And I would say, this will be a living document, subject to changes as we go forward.
So if we find it's getting abused, okay, we're going to sit down and go through a whole new set. This is part of our new policy, and we'll make it emboldened. But I think we ought to give it baby steps a little bit.
That's why I started baby steps with the, the amount of people we're going to have up there initially.
Yeah.
Just to try it out.
It shouldn't come in, drop the hammer right away, just kind of.
Yeah. Okay. Those are some ideas. I want you to read the stuff next week, and we'll make, we'll talk to you next week. I think Lean's got some good information here from other, other towns. And what I like about some of the policies, they actually tell you where to park.
Yeah.
And like, if this park here, where do they park? Someone comes in, well, they can go to the police station, fire department, or the school, and walk right down.
So these towns that I gathered up for you guys to take home and look at, they've really done a really nice job. One of them, the town of Warner, theirs has been in effect since 2013. So they've figured something out that works for them. And obviously, the policy's still in place. The town of Bow has a great separate attachments that where you literally won't forget, you know, the cleaning checklist, the, you know, what is allowed, and.
There you go. Nice checklist to go with it.
Right. So they know what to do. Close up the building.
Handle that out with the application.
Lower the heat, make sure it's done. Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Mary, I know it won't be redundant for this, but Mary did reach out to a whole bunch of libraries that have common space like that.
Yeah, she and I were talking.
And so she did a great list of like eight or nine before they developed this. So some of that had been done.
Already in here, yeah. Yeah, I like that. But I think living document.
Doesn't hurt for us to look at it.
Oh, absolutely. Because I found some, oh, Lean kind of like shut me down on this one. I said, no gambling. I don't know. How do you feel about gambling? It's a little poker hall up there.
Bingo. Bingo's considered gambling. People love bingo.
Well, especially if it becomes like a senior center, like a warming.
What's our cut? What's our cut? All right, moving on.
We need a municipal cut? For the selectmen.
All right.
10% of the pot goes to town?
Yeah, something like that. We'll look at that again next week, but do your homework and take a look at some of the extra material that Lean gave us. All right, Lean, we've got some documents to be signed here. Tell me about it.
Okay, so last week, the board held a public hearing. The final vote of the warrant was entered into the town report. And then part of the required process is that the board signed the warrant. And then the budget part of that is called the MS 636, which is the Department of Revenue document, which I was working with Michelle, our rep from the DRA. These have to be posted in two public places, the place of the polling location, and then I will post it on the town website, and then out here on the board. And the town clerk needs to receive an official copy. So that will take place tomorrow after the board signs it. And then we'll be reading for a town meeting to happen, for them to speak on it.
This is no, just the front page?
Just the cover page, yeah, on that one.
Justin, I'm going to give you the first group. That's one group. Keep the paper with it.
We made it this far, anyway. I think for the most part, the budget process goes pretty smoothly. Departments don't have too many questions. The board sets the guidelines, and it's usually really pretty easy to follow.
David, you got the second set started?
Okay.
Three copies, Lean, correct?
Yep, three copies.
Oh, the same. Yes, okay. That one, do you, Dave? Done.
No motion, or just need to sign all these?
Just need to sign. We already, we already did everything. Hey, Bob, since you're here, I just want to make a comment that, you know, this past summer, I never said anything, but the steps still look great, the front steps of the library. The person we hired did a great job on them.
Yeah, no, they did a good job.
MBC Construction.
Yep. All three copies. Copy one is done. Mike, I'm going to give you some homework this week. Practice my signature and Justin's, and you'll have to do this.
No, we need a stamp.
Yeah, we can get you a stamp.
Okay, thank you. All three?
Yeah.
That's Lean. I have an email I have to forward to Lean.
Okay. All right, we're going to move right on to mailbox items. All right, first of all, the town, we have the galley proofing. Take a look, take a gander at it. If you see a mistake, we don't want to hear about it. No. The thing is, the last minute mistake, we found Morris Road named after Morris the Cat, M-O-R-I-S. It was so correct, it was corrected before it went to, before it's going to print. And other than that, it looks, I thought, looked pretty good. Dedication's in there, looks nice, and the color looks nice and all that. Lean, thank you for your hard work on doing this.
You're welcome. So if the board's okay with it, even if we don't have the.
It's a good picture. Got the library sign in it, got the flag.
That came in at around 4 o'clock on Friday. So it was.
Of course, Mary's got a carpet lean against the doors.
Look at the selectmen.
Oh, she had to, because it was so windy and the doors, the handles aren't.
Open up the selectmen's message. Look at the old picture.
Oh, keep going.
Keep going. Yep. See the difference? Isn't that cool? We have a picture from about turn of the century, Bob, of the 1900, like the 1900 picture, over 100 years ago. Not much difference with that port, with the little particle in the, in the back.
What's this on here for? Anything special?
Nope. Probably had something paperclip on it. So if the board's okay, I'd like to do a dedication next Thursday. We can use this proof as, for that particular meeting and dedicating the town report. That way, it won't hold up receiving the bulk order.
I'd say, why don't we plan for that? All three selectmen will be present, then?
Right.
Okay.
Lean, your email address?
Town Administrator.
Any questions on that? Justin?
Very briefly, we're over.
You'll have a camera, too?
I will bring a tablet.
Or just on this, have, have the sidekick do it.
Yeah, last time I brought my.
No space, right?
Right.
Town Administrator.
At Dunbarren, NH.
All right. Item two from the mailbox. This is for zoning violation, Morris Road. Just to let you know that the building department's been on top of it. There's an email that explains where we are in the process. I'm going to leave it at that. But progress is being made. I'll be a little bit slowly for someone, I'd expect. But when they go through the legal circles, it's got to follow due process, and that's what's been happening. So that's a work in progress.
Dot org.
Okay, there's an email also on the, regarding the, Stephanie has a mitigation plan status. She'll keep us informed. It's still going through the wickets. Anything else you want to add on that, Lean?
That was just basically, we submitted our updated hazard mitigation plan as required in order to qualify for future FEMA funding in the event of a.
Catastrophe.
A catastrophe. And during that last, I want to say, month and a half, FEMA was changing some of the rules or laws. And so we signed an affidavit saying that we would comply with the changes in the event there are adopted, copy needed updates. And we submitted it as we had completed it. So she's very hopeful that they're going to accept it the way it is. And then in the event we have to do a small supplemental amendment, then we'll work on that.
I mean, they're going to give us a sister.
Right.
The central regional plan. All right, the last item, not the last item, but the other item in here is, we have a, the central regional gave us a, an update. There's a, they do traffic surveys across the town. And I like to pass.
As part of our membership.
Right.
It's one of the services they offer.
And I like to pass this to the road agent and a copy to the police department, so they can target which roads they want to work on for traffic surveys. And it's, I guess if we want to do any improvements, or they're using it for bicycle paths and pedestrian paths, it's a, it's a way of showing that there's a need.
Yeah.
So you want the police department to get their copy back as well?
Yes. And tell them the lead, the lead person on that will be the road agent. And I want him to present that to the planning board, Justin, if he would be aware of that.
Yeah, and I think you already sent a copy to it.
Yep.
To the planning board.
The planning board and road agent, but I hadn't on the police department.
Yeah. But I think the road agent should, could be the lead, and since he.
He usually is.
Do, do a membership.
Let the selectmen get the.
A courtesy copy.
Yep.
Okay.
I know that Chris has done several studies throughout town when he's had different complaints, so he has some good info for them.
Yeah, it might be.
Should work with the road agent.
Yeah. Make sure he gives input to the road agent. Even if he has none, just make sure that acknowledges that. All right, Lean also gave us a, a packet of the warrants with the, with the articles and the rejected speaker list. And there was a small change.
I'm going to put yours back in my basket.
Yep. There's a small change on 16 and 17. Darren Larson is the speaker.
And Justin.
And Justin is the backup as cemetery trustee. And the only thing, Dave, I'm going to do, I'm going to shorten my presentation, because I don't have to go line by line.
Yeah.
And I'm just going to keep it at a more high level.
I know that we asked if they want to waive the reading of the individual lines, and they always vote yes, so.
Yep, yep.
But the thing is, I learned my lesson. I tried to do a waving of it with, I think, Mr. Pike, Brian was here.
But it was at the public hearing.
It was public hearing. And he said, no.
Now, what I do is I have, I generally talk to the moderator, John, and I'll ask him to front me, you know, and say, do we want to go and waive that? And we all vote.
But I foresee the high-level discussion I gave was shortened a little bit, but that'll be the high-level discussion of generally the philosophy we followed, Justin, and set the budget.
Yeah, and just tighten it up a little bit to make it quick and brief. People, once you go into detail, then you can hop on that one subject.
As I said, personnel was a tough issue this year. And they, they say, well, why did, why did we up personnel salaries? Well, it was twofold. There's inflation and recruitment.
And they hadn't looked at it in 15 years.
Right.
So I will copy the speaker, the warrant, to the moderator and the town clerk, and then they will get the official vote of the warrant.
With the change, as noted.
Right.
Okay, great. Okay, I'm going to open public comment. Bob?
Just one thing. I heard you guys talking about policy for upstairs.
Yes.
1989, when they built the community center, that was also for town use, for people in town to use. And they weren't successful with the cleanup, so they made people put a deposit down. And if it was clean, they got their deposit back. If it wasn't, they ended up using some of that money to clean the place. So you might want to monitor that to see if that might serve your purpose, like they did there before.
An incentive.
Before it became just a school entity, you know?
That's a good idea. Now, there's a refundable deposit. Now, there's a refundable deposit, if it's clean.
Basically, just folks-
Well, you may not have to do it right away, but you might find it, you may have to do something, and that's an alternative that you might want to look at.
Just to let people count on it.
The other thing is, that Mary usually, through the state, has speakers come in on occasion, and I'm sure she's gonna want to use that, even though the library's still in operation, using upstairs for her. So just to say, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander.
Yeah. I think even if Mary wants to use that, and nobody's using it, she still should ask.
The only thing I would prohibit is maybe a concert with about a hundred people there, or some clogging during hours. I mean, we've got to be reasonable, tap dancing, yeah.
Well, that's understandable, my point is that, I see a person that may want to use that for a presentation, that, you know, would, and even if it's available, that's fine, but I mean, to say, I can do it, but you can't, just, I guess it kind of rubs me the wrong way.
Concur, that's a, that was a glaring item that I saw, that it's gonna be addressed. Thank you, Bob, you concur with it.
Okay, I haven't read through the policies that I have collected for you just yet, but one thing, based on what he's just saying, are we going to consider only signing up, like thirty days in advance? Because you have someone that says, I'm, you know, the boys' club, and I want to reserve it every single month.
They gotta come every month, they gotta come every month.
I think that would be only fair to every, the other individuals that might want-
Because otherwise, they say, I want the third, third-
Wednesday.
Wednesday of every month.
Right.
We're not gonna do that, because it'll get too cumbersome.
And then one, another item that came up is, even if you have the committees that have reoccurring, like we'll use the garden club, they want to meet every month up there, if you ask them for that initial refundable deposit, let's say it's fifty dollars initially, that can stay on account for the calendar year, and in the event, any one of those months that they come back for, on a month-to-month basis, there's one month that requires cleaning, because something happened, then we can use, we have the money, and then they would have to replenish that fifty dollars, so not to ask them for it over and over every month, but get, for the reoccurring committees, if they're going to meet up there, one refundable deposit, but it has to be kept on retainer, if they're gonna be, you know, coming back for-
Basically saying it's a twelve month period.
Yeah, that's all on the table, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, Bob.
You know, the point that Lane makes, I've already heard from different organizations in town that think that they're gonna get it on a monthly basis, so you make a good point.
Yeah.
They should have to apply every time, I think.
Yeah.
Because you don't know who you might be cutting out of a chance to use the facilities, and, you know, and then we go back to what we had with the community center. You know, it was for everybody in town, when it wasn't used by the school, and then it was dominated by one sector, and-
Yeah, for basketball.
And it could be if we had something controversial, you know, we needed a larger meeting.
We had meetings here, which were standing room only, and that would have been imperfect, and we had a public hearing on some of the farming activities in town.
And I made sure in that policy, and we'll double check it, but I made sure there was wording to the effect that if we have one of those, we override as a town functioning meeting, anything that's going on up there. Like, say you booked Boys Club there on a Thursday night, and then we get a meeting, and we can understand that there's gonna be a huge amount of people at it.
Right.
We're gonna override and take that meeting over, and we'll reread the wording, but it is in there, I know.
It wasn't, it wasn't, I didn't see that.
Because the meetings that will affect that meeting room is the zoning board on a Monday, planning board on a Wednesday, and then selectmen on Thursdays.
Yeah, so any of those that have large controversial meetings, that need more room.
Should have, you know, some kind of clause.
Stay in order. Yeah. But this is, again, to quote a former selectman, this was inexpensive meeting space. So I'm happy to have it, and Dave, I appreciate the hard work you did, but don't spend any more-
I'm not done, man.
Okay, I'm gonna open up a public comment. Bob, anything else?
I just did.
I, anything else, though, I was, that's where I left off with you, okay. Now, bring it back to the board, Lane, you're first.
No, I think you've covered everything we needed to break down.
We gotta be here for another thirty-five minutes at least, I said eight oh seven.
Clock's wrong.
The clock's wrong.
You know, seven thirty-five, you could beat my record if you try hard enough. I'm not gonna let you down.
Seven thirty-four, okay, I'm gonna go with Justin first, anything for-
I just wanted to make, make you guys aware that the town of Hopkinton sent the planning board, we met last night, and they sent us a notice of public hearing to lay out a road that connects to Old Hopkington Road for us, over by the dump, or the transfer station. It's pretty significant, because it would add quite a bit of, it's a main thoroughfare now, but they're talking about making this class six road, laying it out to class five paved, and it would connect to Old Hopkington, bringing a lot of traffic to that road.
Justin, can you make sure we're notified of the meeting, so if we have a chance, we can make them?
Yeah, this, this one's for Monday, March thirteenth, at six PM, at the Hopkington Town Hall.
Monday?
What's your first push on that, you think it's gonna be a problem for?
Yeah, we think so, and at the planning board meeting, everybody thought, thought so, because it brings a lot of traffic to Old Hopkington Road now, because that's a throughway, the way it goes now from South Road, and then cuts through on seventy-seven, but it kind of is on a sharper curve.
So they want to connect them to one of our roads?
Yeah. So Old Hopkington Road-
Which is the one Jacques lives on.
Yeah, correct, and it deadends at the town line now, but the old South Road part of it in Hopkington is class six now, and that, someone's asking to make it class five, and they're gonna pave it, because it'll make it so they can basically add three to five lots, I believe that, yeah, three to five new building lots.
And the road agent, was he, was his take on that?
Uh, he's gonna attend the public hearing.
Okay.
Um, just to see, because again, it's, you know, I know that's a cut through, so I think it would bring significant traffic to our, to our town road, and-
I also know that's another road in town that does not have a proper turnaround.
For plow vehicles.
At the end of Old Hopkington Road, there's no plow, plowing turnaround.
Yeah, and he, he said ours actually ends about two hundred feet before the town line. Um, there's a, like, kind of a dead space, it's like no man's land style, so.
Completely unimproved then?
Yeah, it's, the pavement stops about two hundred feet, he's thinking, it was a gasterment, from our town line, so he's not sure.
How they, how they would pave one on a property, on town property?
Yeah, I guess, you know, kind of complete the circle.
Wouldn't they have to bring out the class five in town? If they're gonna use, if they're moving, if they're upgrading a class six in Hopkington, that hits a dead area, that area's gonna have to be upgraded as well.
So, he's gonna attend the meeting, I know a few other people in the planning board, we're gonna attend the meeting.
I don't know if there's anything we could do to even stop them, to making that upgrade to the road.
But there, there's no road in Dunbarton's side, there's no road.
But they could upgrade it to class five, they'd have to be under our standards, though.
But the thing is, they cannot do anything to town property.
Without our approval.
Right.
We'd have to approve ours, and then we'd have to ask for, if there's not a significant turnaround there for Jeff, then we'd have to ask for them to-
Do a turnaround for us.
Do a turnaround. So, I just figured I'd make you guys aware of that, I think it's pretty, pretty significant, it's gonna make, I think, a substantial change in traffic to Old Hopkington Road, so.
Would it be worthwhile to let the residents know of this too?
I think the planning does have their notice.
Yep.
See, they're making assumption that meets Old Hopkington Road, the Dunbarton Town Line.
And that, and that's what Jeff said, he thinks they're under the assumption that the town line is right where our road ends, and he has said that it doesn't.
It's obviously one landaboutter wants to-
Yeah, it's, it's brought up by a resident of Hopkinton, I believe.
But the selectmen are gonna lay the road out?
That's what he's, he's asking per RSA.
There's no legal obligation for us to make a road when there's no road. Okay, it'd be interesting to get input from the residents here, it'd be interesting to see what the road agent, our subject matter expert, what he wants to say on that. And the thing is, let's say it's a good thing, and it's, but the turnaround is important, as Dave said.
Can we get a copy of it?
He just scanned it to me, I'll forward it to you, is that alright? Do you want a paper copy?
You can have this one, I have an email.
You do, okay, Bert.
I can send it, I can forward it to you guys.
Send it to me, email, Delaine?
Just forward it.
Okay, anything else, Justin?
That's it.
To you, Dave.
Okay, I'm not gonna, might get out of here too early. Uh, the first thing is, we're cleaning a, we're cleaning a little storage bin up on the stage upstairs in the old town hall, and we found some Grange songs that were from the Stark Grange, and a couple other Granges around the area, and there was one found up there already in July of twenty twenty. And I'd like to make a recommended motion to the board, Donna Dunn did look through them, and said that she did not really want to start a new envelope with these in them. She suggested that we donate them to the Dunbarton Historical Society, and following her recommendation, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend to send these to the Dunbarton Historical Society for safekeeping.
Second one?
And the, at one time, talking with Fred Mullin-
Right, we were talking about the Grange, just not-
They had Grange Hall meetings up there, so that's why some of that stuff was around, because there were several members. I think Mr. Mills here at the top of the hill was one of the original Grange Hall members, and so, most of those things are things where they would sing songs through, after the Grange Hall meetings, so.
Some Historical Society?
Yes, yeah, Donna Dunn had looked through them, and she didn't want to start a new folder with anything like that. She knew they already had some copies in their stuff, so that's what she recommended.
And this has been seconded, any further discussion on that? If they don't want them, what, I'd say, we just, we'll discuss it, if they don't want them, we'll bring it back to the board and discuss further action with them.
Yeah, I think Colleen Allison should probably, she already has a folder on them, I think.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I found an old globe up there, which I think Mary's gonna keep, but it does have a hole in the center that matches the original globes.
Was that the globing woman where the ice fell out?
Must have been. And then I'll start on the rest of the improvements on the building this week. Uh, the electricians, electricians finished the lighting, although there are some adjustments that are still being made. I know that these lights over here, on the side of the building, Mary has gotten some letters from the Zellers in reference to that. Um, those lights are staying on all evening, and they're dusted dawn lights, and they were sent that way from the architect.
Okay.
I'm not sure what we can do about maybe putting them on a timer or something, about maybe, but they are pretty bright heading towards their house for sleeping at night. Um, there's a motion sensor light that is on the door above the basement, that seems to be going on and off without the motion, we thought the flag was causing it, but it looks like, uh, it looks like there might be something going on with that light as well.
I think you can set those to the sensitivity, right, when you adjust that?
Well, they, I don't know.
Or change the angle, so-
Yeah, I, I think the flag may even be causing it, because the new lights that are motion sensor lights, like these ones, they come on slowly, and they go off slowly, so by the time the thing finishes its function, it's doing it all over again, you know, so.
Something's triggering it.
Another thing I wanted to let you know, you can see the lights look dim on the upstairs there.
Yes.
The lights that are in the hallway.
Right, I was thinking they were left on.
Um, and they are. As you enter into that room, and go ahead up the stairs, the lights brighten.
Okay.
When nobody's motioning, in the stairway, they dim down. And they're on all the time, and I don't think there is a switch to turn them on and off, but that's something they did as the architect's feature. So I'll ask them about that, but those lights, those dim looking ones, will stay on on second floor.
Those aren't, those aren't necessarily a-
Yeah, I don't think they're too harsh.
No.
They might even look kind of nice, because it kind of looks like just a warm glow.
Yep, but the, the spotlights on the outside probably need to be-
But some of those lights in there, like the big globe one as you walk in?
Yeah.
That is a, a globe light with on and off, with automatic emergency backup built into the globe with, so that light's, I don't know how many thousands of dollars, but it was one that was called out on the plan. So, if the power goes out, they automatically have-
For the stairs.
Yeah, and they also have battery backups besides that, so it's a-
More covered safety.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the sprinkler system got a test this week, we had all kinds of people here, we had the fire pump company for the sprinkler here, the sprinkler company and the electrician all working on it. Um, they did a couple of tests on the pump, but the pressurized test for the rest of it didn't get tested, because the pump guys had left and shut the pump off, so they have to air up the entire system, so they're gonna redo that again tomorrow morning.
Okay.
John Wigan had to leave for an appointment, so they're doing it again for John tomorrow morning, that should be done and finished, so. When that's done, Lane, I think the sprinkler guys will be okay to pay that final invoice, but-
Um, are you gonna be there?
Um, I'm not gonna plan to be there.
I'll send John a text, ask him to let me know if it went well, then we can pay it next week.
Yeah. I noticed Dunbarton Fuel Truck was there earlier today, and they had moved that-
Oh, great.
Heater down in the basement, out of the way of the electrical systems, that was great.
Thank you.
I want to put a special thank you out to John Wigan, he's been with me off and on in meetings there all week, as these guys would get ready, and he would leave and go back to work, and come back and go, and so he's been right there, and he's gonna be there again tomorrow morning, so, just a special thank you for him to come out and do all those inspections with us. Lane, I was wondering if you could have, um, there is a dispenser with those folding towels on the wall in there for both bathrooms, and then also toilet paper. So, I'm not sure how you guys store those here, but if we could maybe have Joe Marie purchase the proper ones, so that when we do have that operational, we'll have the proper stuff there for it.
Okay.
Think they're the white-
So they're installed there, we want to look at the model, and they get the orders?
Yeah, I think they're the white folding ones that go in.
Okay.
Amazon's a probably good price to get it, not Staples.
And there's also trash bins just below, maybe little trash bags to hang in that bin. And then the regular-
I'll have her take a walk over there.
The regular toilet paper, however, just so we have that. Um, the drywall's installed on everything upstairs, even the little, um, storage area, and they're taping it now currently. Um, I've got two sets of painters, look at that, and the floor is waiting for estimates back on those. Um, I have a third one coming in that I just found today while I was eating lunch.
For floors?
Uh, for the wall painting.
Okay, great.
I only have two on the floors so far. Um, I let Lane know earlier today, I'm waiting for three electrical bids back from the electrician. One is our second number back for the electrical panel, which we already approved over at the fire department. Number two was a-
Irish was gonna do it too.
That is Irish.
Okay.
And then, um, number two was, um, we talked last week about adding some basement lighting downstairs, so that you could actually see what's going on down there, and have the switches in the appropriate spots.
Fire department. No, no, this one here.
This one here.
Right, yeah.
Very dimly lit, just a few, and replace the bulbs that need to be replaced down there. And the third one is for Irish Electric to come back and do the proper wiring for the stage lighting and stuff, which is part of the Casanos.
Donation.
Yeah. So those electrical bids that we're waiting for back. Uh, Mary's Wi-Fi guy was there today, and he powered up the internet, which we needed to test the elevator. They're gonna test the elevator next Friday in a preliminary test, and that will check all the Wi-Fi connections and everything else, and the video and the monitoring. So I'm gonna have to get the monitoring to company, Lane, what's their name?
Pro Technologies.
The test, is that by the state or by independent?
Pro Technologies, the elevator company, and I'm gonna have Mary's Wi-Fi guy come back to make sure everything functions properly.
Next Friday?
Next Friday, and then on March fourteenth is our final state inspection. So they want to make sure it works and functions before they get to state.
For sure.
Instead of the state fails it, you're gonna wait another month for them to come back.
Okay, so I'll shoot Pro Technology an email as a reminder-
That'd be great.
Next Friday, do you have a time yet, or no?
Um, first thing in the morning.
I'll CC you, you think eight o'clock is what you, the first thing, or seven, or seven thirty?
I would say, uh, let me see, for him.
I think not, eight thirty, nine o'clock would be-
I think eight for him, only because the other guys will get there and work on their stuff.
Okay.
Although he said they've got it just about done.
I'll CC you on it, so you know if I haven't.
In meeting with Mary's Wi-Fi, um, internet guy, um, looking at their- In meeting with Mary's wifi, um, internet guy, um, looking at their modem, it's pretty full. With what they're accessing and using in their wifi hub. His recommendation is when we do get the upstairs functioning, we'll have a separate modem up there so that we can have our own wifi on the second floor. That will keep it completely independent of theirs.
I mean, a router, a separate router, yeah.
So we'll do a separate router up there.
If we have to pay for a fiber optic to get up there, then we should get a router with that.
Yeah, we already, I'm already having them run the router up with the electrical work. I mean, not the, they're running the fiber optic wire up.
Okay.
So the wire will be there, so we'll just, when we decide, we're gonna man that up and we're gonna go for our own wifi on the second floor. We'll get a router and we'll have them come up and wire it up.
Routers, you can buy, they give you the generic one, you can buy, we can get one very, a very good one locally.
We could even go through G S I and just pay four ninety-five a month for one.
Well, we have always bought it, it's like a hundred bucks, a hundred fifty dollars.
And it's usually better.
You don't forget that you've been paying a five dollar fee for ten years that you really don't need.
And the quality of a G S I versus, uh, uh, what we can get on Amazon.
Lean, when it comes time, I'll have, um, I'll have Mary get you the text number, I can email it to you. Just, he's very concerned to keep it separate from Mary's system.
Right.
And, uh.
Yeah, if we're paying for a separate line, since they're gonna fill us, there'll be a wifi or a box that's tied to that particular.
Yeah.
Line, that's what you pay for.
So we'll just keep it separate, he thought it was good and their, their stuff is pretty well maxed out there that they're running, so.
Okay.
That way they, whatever anybody's doing upstairs shouldn't affect anything they're doing or changes speed of it. And I think that's all I have, other than that, the rest of the stuff on the building, I think we'll be there tomorrow finishing up his touch-ups. Of course, all the subcontractors touched the walls and fixtures and everything else all over again, so. I feel bad for him, but that's part of the job.
Yep, absolutely. Alright, to me, um, speaking of wifi, I, a lot of complaints, uh, Granite State's had a lot of trouble in Dunbar with, uh. Internet going down for a couple minutes and coming back up and.
I've had, I've had the issue myself at my house.
From, uh, in the office here, complaints, wants to know why we can't get.
I don't think it's any better now, I don't know why, but.
Maybe we wanna just reach out to them and say, why is, we're getting complaints and just say, an explanation would be helpful as we.
I've had movies dropped and not be able to finish a movie.
This one was right on the end, uh, on Stock River South, that's the main trunk for fiber optic.
Right, so maybe an email to them or call and say, an explanation would be helpful.
Yeah.
Because we're, we're fielding the calls too.
What do you, Bob?
Well, I was gonna say, I had the same problem at home and I'm visiting somebody that's got a condo right next to the ball field in Manchester. They got Comcast, it happened to him at his house. So doesn't make any difference, seems like where you're going, no, cause I kept hearing Leo tell me that he was having the same problem in his house. And all of a sudden it was starting at mine, then we're watching the, uh, the basketball games between the colleges this weekend. We're over at this guy's house and all of a sudden he lost it and they had to, and they had to go back, he had to do a whole different route than we have to. Usually I go over, I've unplugged the router.
Right.
And put it back.
And they, and they say.
It resets it.
They say the, that is probably the recommended, recommended solution at this point, to pull, unplug it and plug it back in.
But the last two weeks, we've had to do it four times, I've never done it before in my life.
No, this has, this has been problematic and I think is the, the media has been raising the heck with it, people screaming on the media.
And we are, we are, we're paying the extra for their services now too.
Yeah, well, remember Dunbarton pays more than where.
Well, you pay more for the service here because you have to have a phone from Dunbarton, a phone in order to get D S L from Granite State.
Yeah, okay, so if you just get back to that, alright, um, I'm maintaining a motion, gentlemen, I don't have much for this week.
Make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-four.
Oh, second?
It would have been sooner if Dave didn't talk so much.
I could have brought it past eight.
You gotta quicken that up, isn't that what you always tell Mike? Yeah, gotta shorten that up.
The odds and ends over there, just, they're killing me.
Behave yourself.
Thanks.
That's funny, I didn't, I touched aside saying, who wouldn't want to leave a cold cup of coffee here, I didn't even open it up.
I still don't, I said, you gotta fix, Mike keeps stealing all the candies I'm dressing.
I tell you, I got, I got messed over this week, you tell, tell her I got messed over. Thank you.
There you go, Mike.
You're stealing all the candy?
I would, before this meeting was started, I'd take them out, now if they would behave and stuff, I'd give them one.
Well, I circumvented it with Donna this week.
I brought a five pound bag and there was over two hundred in there.
You should see the way people, I, you guys give me a lot of incentives to not touch that because I see everybody dig.
Cause you see how big we are?
It's like, I'm not gonna touch that candy because we have one, you can't stop.
See, I can't have it till tomorrow though. Cause I have a cheat day. You can eat anything you want on cheat day. So what's on my agenda tomorrow? Well, the thing is, I did have a cheat day already, Valentine's Day, I have to say, I have my Dunkin' heart-shaped donuts.
Is that turned off?
Yes, I did.
I got my granddaughter one.
That's off, okay. He's not here on, on the second of March, so that's why I'm doing dedication next Thursday. He's going to Florida.
Disney World?